It is nine o'clock, nine o'clock actually. Today is Monday, March fourteenth, 2016. And I will call the Public Charity Commission to order today. We have Dr. Nancy from the Urban Affairs Church. We do the indications that will stay and remain stated for the later agenda.
Father, we thank you for this day that you've been made. Reminded as we begin that justice is one of your attributes. Father bless those who make decisions today. The stress and burden of a decision remains with us in our minds and in our hearts. We always want to do the right thing. May we remember today how our decisions impact not only the powerful but the powerless, not only those with much but those with little. Then we be both people of wisdom and grace. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all. Arm of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, united in all.
Okay, we're gonna entertain you first this morning because it's a little early to really get serious. So Jason, if you'll come up, we're gonna show you. We're gonna.
(laughter).
The reason is cute. Good choice.
This is the people we're gonna. Y'all remember back in January, I went to the legislative conference and I was confronted by a company named CGI who wanted to do a video in Potter County and no calls to us. And so we said, okay, we'll talk about it. So they came, Jason and I sat down and they helped plan and everyone here was anybody in the city and the county to do, be on camera. And so we came up, they came up with this. And then they go out and they did advertising for people and that's how they paid for it. And apparently they did okay with advertising. So I'm gonna, y'all sit back and just enjoy this for a second. It probably takes about.
Ten minutes.
Maybe ten. If you haven't, has anybody ever seen it already? Anybody seen it? One person, one hating it. Oh, two, okay. So anyway, so we're gonna sit back and watch it. It's on the website.
I went for popcorn.
Sorry, it's too, too early. So anyway, so if there's a little bit of country music involved or whatever. Hi, my name is Nancy Tanner and I'm Potter County Judge. Potter County is located in the middle of the Texas Panhandle. Amarillo is the county seat. Just so happens that Amarillo is about in the two different counties, Potter and Randall. I've lived in both my entire life. So we both, both counties have bragging mouths full of the most beautiful sunrises and the most beautiful sunsets you've ever seen. People here in the county and in the city are the most friendly people you'll ever meet. They're always ready with a smile, a wave, or a tip of the hat. But we are very proud of our home loan facilities that we do have. We also brag of the most wonderful educational opportunities, also the state of the art medical center. So join me as we take this video journey of this place I call home. If you like what you see, come visit, but be careful, you just now want to stay. Thank you.
Beautiful open plains under wide blue skies. Welcome to Potter County, Texas. Part of the Amarillo metropolitan area, Potter County is the hub of the Texas Panhandle. People come from Oklahoma, New Mexico, Kansas, even Colorado to partake in the education, healthcare, and employment opportunities available here, as well as to enjoy our wonderful shopping, dining, and entertainment options. Potter County also serves as the regional center for emergency management and homeland security coordination for the area. Yet in spite of all these amenities, residents here enjoy a remarkably low cost of living, including some of the lowest water rates in the state and some of the lowest gas and electric prices in the nation. And as if that weren't enough, Potter County also has a mild climate with varying seasons and nearly three hundred seventy days each year. We're also rich in history and charm with some of the finest historical buildings anywhere. Visit today, experience the charm, amenities, and natural beauty of Potter County for yourself.
They have different categories, obviously. We'll go through a couple up here. They have a bit of a close from AIXD, talk about education, healthcare, different things.
When it comes to educational opportunities, Potter County is unraveled in scope and quality.
Potter County is home to four school districts, each boasting its own awards, accolades, and unique advantages such as one-to-one ratios, tablets, and laptops for student use, and endorsements and distinctions in math, science, and social studies. Our award-winning Highland Park District is one of only five districts in the nation to offer the Gateway to Health Careers Program, which allows students to graduate high school with an endorsement of public services. Potter County is also home to top-rated higher education institutions such as West Texas A&amp;M University, the Texas Tech Health Sciences Center, the Amarillo College, a public community college with six campus locations, and more than one hundred and sixty different programs of study. Whether you're looking to provide the best quality education for your children or to expand your own skills, the answer is in Potter County, Texas.
Is that you on the bed there that were lifting it?
That was you.
With the dummy, yeah.
Be well, live well, in the community that cares about your health. Potter County, Texas.
Few factors speak to a community's quality of life more rightly than the way it cares for the health and wellbeing of its residents. In Potter County, you'll find a wealth of highly rated options for both preventative and acute care, including the Texas Tech Health Sciences Center, a consolidated twenty-acre medical center comprising the schools of medicine, pharmacy, and allied health. Potter County is also home to two superb hospitals, the Healthcare System at Baptist St. Anthony, which is rated one of America's best hospitals by both U.S. News and World Report, and also Northwest Texas Healthcare System, a certified advanced primary stroke center. But that's not all. We're also home to the Thomas E. Creed VA Medical Center, a skilled nursing facility with one hundred and twenty beds, and to the LifeStar Emergency Helicopter Transport, which has been serving the Texas Panhandle for over twenty-two years. Be well, live well, in the community that cares about your health. Potter County, Texas.
Invitable resources, amenities, low cost of living, and an affordable, stable housing market. Welcome to Potter County, Texas.
Our real estate market was recently ranked in the top ten markets to watch by Inman News. This comes as no surprise to Potter County residents whose love for their community is evident at every turn. Listed on the National Registry of Historic Places, Amarillo's historic Wolfen District is a premier residential area boasting historic mansions and steeply tree-lined brick streets. Here you'll find residents descended from the area's first pioneer families, as well as young professionals, philanthropists, and others who appreciate the area's history and charm. If the golf lifestyle is what you love, come home to Tascosa Golf Club, the Panhandle's premier golf club and residential community, offering two eighteen-hole championship golf courses, an all-new family complex complete with a pool, soccer courts, sand volleyball, and basketball facilities. From tree-lined streets to golf course views, we've got it all. Find your dream home in Potter County, Texas.
Few things make you feel more alive than immersing yourself in the splendor of nature with its wide-open spaces, endless parks, and botanical gardens. It's almost as if Potter County was designed to get you outdoors.
Few things make you feel more alive than immersing yourself in the splendor of nature with its wide-open spaces, endless parks, and botanical gardens. It's almost as if Potter County was designed to get you outdoors. Take a tour of the Amarillo Botanical Gardens and enjoy programs like Music in the Gardens. Or pay a visit to the Wildcat Bluff Nature Center, where you can walk the trails, see the many species of wildflowers, or visit the historic Gray Marcy Waddy Trail. Just thirty minutes from Potter County is Palo Duro, the Grand Canyon of Texas. This wouldn't be Texas without horses. River Breaks Ranch lets you bet on the ponies using monopoly-like money called Ranch Bucks. You can also participate in clay shooting, team roping, or just take in the Panhandle sunset. When you're ready to come indoors, visit the ten thousand square foot Amarillo National Center for Concerts and Sporting Events. Adventure awaits in Potter County, Texas.
By now, you may know that Potter County is affordable and appealing with wide-open spaces, educational opportunities, and quality healthcare options, as well as charm to spend. But we also have one hundred and twenty music, arts, and culture.
Take the new Globe News Center for the Performing Arts, opened in 2006, it's going to the Amarillo Opera, Amarillo Symphony, Golden Star Ballet, a rotating calendar of cultural events. Spend some time at the Amarillo Museum of Art on the grounds of Amarillo College. We'll pay a visit to the Galleries at Sunset, which features a variety of art from within one hundred local artists. You'll even have the opportunity to see the artists at work in their onsite studios. The Don Harrington Discovery Center is an interactive hands-on science museum and planetarium that's popular with adults and children alike. While the Panhandle Plains Historical Society preserves Amarillo's rich history for generations to come. Experience the best of what life has to offer in Potter County, Texas.
Thanks, we filmed this over a three-day period. We went to over sixty different places. Started by seven and before then.
Poor Katie, she was.
There are many factors that make Potter County a wonderful place to live. In addition to our low cost of living, Potter County also boasts an extremely low unemployment rate and a even lower rate of inflation. Here in Potter County, we're insulated from the effects of the national economy, making this a more stable and comfortable place to live.
Our unemployment rate is low, thanks in part to a community that is rich in industry, including energy research and development, agriculture, copper refining, fiberglass production, defense contracts, and oil and gas production. We're also home to Fantex, the only nuclear weapons assembly and disassembly facility in the country and a major employer in the area. Other major employers include Bell helicopter manufacturers, Amarillo National Bank, the largest family-owned bank in the country, and the renewable wind energy industry. And of course, we're also home to thousands of thriving local businesses. Put your skills to work in Potter County, Texas.
Arts and culture, fresh air and sunshine make life worth living. But never underestimate the power of shopping and dining. Start at the extensive Westgate Mall, a magnet that attracts consumers from across the region. You'll find everything from sheet boutiques to your favorite chains and department stores here, and plenty more. Ready to break for lunch? There are hundreds of locally owned, one-of-a-kind establishments dotted the streets of Potter County, including America's very first doughnut shop and the Golden Lane Cafe, the oldest restaurant in Amarillo. Possibly the oldest restaurant still operating along Route sixty-six. Truly a place with something for everyone, Potter County boasts everything from sushi to steak. Like eight oh six coffee lounge, a funky and collected cafe with live entertainment mainly, and an all-vegetarian vegan friendly menu. Come on down and have some fun in Potter County, Texas.
Downtown Amarillo is a hub of activities from arts and entertainment to shopping, dining, and culture.
Stop by on Wednesdays during the summer months to enjoy climbing on the square, a free concert featuring local entertainment up along the county courthouse. October brings jazz tour, free jazz concerts at the historic Vivint's home throughout the month of October. When the holiday season rolls around, the Aquatic Light Parade returns on the first Friday in December. Historic tours of downtown are available throughout the year. There are also events at the new two-twenty-five-room Embassy Suites Convention Center Hotel. Follow along with the event's calendar to keep track of the many festivals, parades, and activities that take place downtown throughout the year. We hope to see you there.
And this last one is one they're, they're still putting together to get more volunteer organizations to join in.
Anyways, but not everyone gets to reside within a true community. Our vast array of community organizations not only provide opportunities to give back, get involved, and come together, they create a sense of pride for our city and continue to help forge the community our residents are proud to call home. Doing better by working together. Community starts here.
Okay, so what'd you think? Pretty good, huh? All right, thanks, Jason. Appreciate all your work on that, too. Okay, now down to business. Number one, a recognition of minutes from the February twenty-second, twenty sixteen Public Charity Commission call me. Have any questions or mistakes?
Get to face.
Also time to say. Nine is still recognized. Number two. Oh, yeah, well, that's, you know, that, Shannon's computer keeps. Nothing?
This last, last meeting. Skip number three.
Okay, number two, budget amendment. To consider an act upon the budget amendments for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fiscal year. We'll take that first and then second. Any questions or comments about budget amendments?
We reapproved the budget amendments that was presented in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen year.
Have a motion right of second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. And the second part of that is to consider an act upon creation of infrastructure maintenance account and to transfer initial funds to the new account.
So what brought this up is historically, any maintenance that was done inside the buildings wasn't facilities maintenance issued, and it's there on top of the buildings, wireless equipment, sort of, it was an IT thing. We've never had a place to account for maintenance in between the buildings. And downtown, we've got some fiber, okay, but we're about to head fifteen miles up and going out to the new sheriff's building. And so, I thought kind of proactively, we need to set aside some funds for that. What's going to be charged to this account would be really two things. First would be all of our locates for when you dial eight one one before you dig. They call us and we call the electrical contractors, we go out and mark our lines and nobody digs it. And the second thing is that in the event that someone does cut through, let's say with the backhoe, they're doing construction work, whatever, yes, they will eventually be liable for it, but we need to pay for it up front to get whatever is fixed. And so that would get charged to this account. So are we taking funds from the facilities account? And then we're setting up a new budget year to mount and is getting in collecting space properties.
We recommend that we take that contingency as we first get this camp set up. Because we don't know exactly how much we'll be stealing.
How much do you recommend that we take out of that?
Five.
And starting this next budget here, we'll just have it as regular budget. Five thousand?
But to be clear, this is, this is an item we already have, budget is just in another line item.
No, we do not have anything budgeted for this.
Well, that's not the right answer, Mike. We're, we're, I hear what you're, what we're saying, what I'm trying to say is we're moving money, we're not creating something new. We're not amending the budget, writing another line item and just breaking something. We move money from one line item.
Yes.
That's what I want. Because we got, we got to do budgeting in a different way. So, so as far as I'm concerned, this is a budget transfer.
Yeah, it's a transfer. We're just creating a new place to cap transfer.
Right.
We're just.
We're in pocket, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's option.
Before we move, is there a one day?
Well, I was just gonna tell you, all the vouchers, we actually had a couple of items that were charged, that we need to charge to this account, and one of them is thirty million dollars. So that was an unusual charge for this contract.
So did you say we need to amend the budget?
No, transfer. I'll make a question. We need to transfer five thousand dollars from the contingency fund to this new account.
Second? Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Number three, vouchers. To consider an act upon approval of payment of vouchers from this public county auditor's office compared to Bigfoot seventeen, twenty sixteen, through March nine, twenty sixteen. There's been an adjustment in the total. It's checks number one six seven four one three three one six seven 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 six and wire transfer six eight three three six nine four, the amount of three million two hundred and three thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and forty, thirty cents, forty cents. Do I have any questions or comments?
Carrie, you mentioned a couple of, in this previous motion, expected the construction network taken out of the voucher.
It's check number one six seven six nine six. Two more. We have to look at them, look at them.
Was that from the sheriff's office? Or is that just downtown?
It was downtown. It's not part of the sheriff's.
Do we need a motion before we discuss this more?
Yeah, yeah.
I move that we, that we approve the vouchers as presented by the judge and, or in our package.
Okay, you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second discussion?
I just wanted to ask a question in regards to the orphan tax control. Did we ever get any credit for? Or could not take care of the sheriff's department that gave?
As we are working on that, they should, I just got an email from Matt Crandall, our buyer, and they're working on those right now. We're getting full credit back from those, those months.
So it's in the.
It's in works.
Do we have a reason? Did they give us a reason why they didn't go out there?
It was just a new contract and just trying to get it all. It's a brand-new contract that was just awarded in December. So they're just trying to get all the places they need to go. It's just an oversight, yeah. But we'll keep monitoring that.
Okay.
They are treating now, aren't they?
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Insurance report to recognize insurance report. Is there anything unusual in that case? Or they were saying, okay, so recognize on that. The five tax office, do you consider an act upon the approval of the properties purchased with the sheriff's sale on March first, from six twenty? Anything unusual that, that you tell us about this? It's just a usual.
Unusual, you only had three properties.
They're very successful.
That's good.
Typically, I mean, average.
We usually have about ten or twelve. So all is good with this then? Money is in-house? Okay.
Move approval, move approval of the properties purchased here, they should have said March first, twenty sixteen.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. For your thing, so much. Make sure. Number six, grand jury. To consider an act upon negotiations for payment obligations in reference to donuts for the grand jurors. We should have started with this one today, I think.
We've normally been furnishing donuts to the grand jurors and it's been hard years to the district clerk's budget. We typically recently gave them the donut stock, which they would allow credit charges and maybe present a bill at the end of the month and they would get paid through the normal voucher process. But they're not going, they're not going to do that after April first. It's like, because you can't pay, all these other things, you're gonna figure out another way to do that. So I talked to the donut stock and then the price is gonna go up also. So what I'm proposing to the court is that the court do the same thing that you did with the meals for jury. Those used to be under the voucher system, that y'all gave auditor's office approval to pay for those if they come up, so it can, the vendor, the restaurant can get paid more quickly. And so I've talked to Carrie and to Caroline about if we could fake those to check, if we get away from the voucher system, give approval to pay for anything less than, less than twenty dollars. Right now, the current charge until April first is nine dollars and seventy-five cents a week. After that, it's gonna be eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents. So we don't have to keep coming back in every time we're pricing a recent something. If we can do that same thing, giving the auditor's office permission to cut that checks, which they cut checks on Thursday, so they could cut it on Thursday, the week before we need it. We get it Wednesday afternoon, because investigators pick, pick them up. So then we can take it that either Wednesday or Thursday, whatever day before we get it in the panel. If they're waiting on Wednesday or Thursday, we can take it to the vendor at the time that we picked it up for.
Can we just use a credit card on that? That'd be easier just to. Instead of having to do all that stuff.
Well, it would be the district clerk's credit card and she's not willing to allow us to get access to that.
Why don't we do petty cash? Could we just do petty cash account? I don't know. How many grand jurors you love every Wednesday or whatever?
Most of the country.
Twelve. They all even have, everyone of being done out. Everyone.
Randall has jets, you wanna start going there?
They come up last week and out of a dozen and a half there were ten left.
Ten left. You know, basically, literally, the grand jurors are paying for their own donut anyway because it comes out of taxpayer money.
That would be crazy.
So come, have a bring their own donut.
It's out of their own pocket.
Yeah, well, I don't care, I don't care what y'all, what you work out, whatever.
So, so what?
Check is fine.
What drove all this stuff? Basically, was it just budget issues on there?
The donuts not changed.
The, the donut, according at this time, the donut stock is changing, the practice is in that they're not gonna allow credit charges anymore. So we can't keep doing the one deal at the end of the month voucher system. And so that's, that's a whole day of favorite.
I know, I don't know why they would, you know, when I had that, let the sheriff's office be in charge of it, because they love donuts.
Go now.
Sorry, Sheriff. Sheriff, sorry, I didn't say that.
I was giving you a chance to eat yourself.
Everyone heard me but you, right? I think everyone heard me, but you ain't.
I guess the reason I'm surprised with the chuckle is I don't know why something like this had to come to us, but...
Well, because we gotta get it away from the voucher system.
Yeah, we had to vote on the, on what it was vouchers that, that won't do vouchers.
I had no other avenue to our offices and buying anything.
So, the rate of the base market, Carrie, is it, you don't do?
It's not the most convenient thing in the world, and I want to have a chance to agree that it was a work, if y'all want to do it that way. I would prefer to do it on my credit card with someone to sign for it and then add in.
We had to go to our office, pick it up and sign it for it, and that's not gonna work.
About just dropping the donuts altogether. Pardon me, about just dropping the donuts altogether.
It's nine dollars and seventy-five cents right now.
Well, it just looks like it's a pain.
Less than twelve bucks after.
It looks like it's just a pain. Looks like it's just a pain to have to do. Why don't you just go pay cash and reverse you?
He doesn't own, he doesn't want him.
I'm not picking him up.
So, that's a...
I can't. Forty-seven district attorney's offices never bought, bought anything for the grand jurors or not.
And that's probably a good thing.
We do not.
It's a paralyzed budget for it.
It's not that special for the grand jurors.
It's the district clerk's budget, he's the commissioner, so. Okay. So, we need to change it to a, to a check being written, reversed every day.
If y'all will allow us to do it on a weekly basis.
Can't you do, can't you do about a month? Just do, you gotta check for a month.
They will not let us do it.
It's the, it's the donut stock's new rules. It's not us.
They won't take a check in, in advance of the donuts.
You can't pay in advance. The government can't pay in advance. Trust me. I'll talk about everything.
Go to her, please. What other donut place?
I'll do that for the donuts.
I've done all the research. I'm gonna do one.
I was just gonna say, from a purchasing, from a purchasing perspective, a lot of these small businesses are getting out of the bill. Billing is really what it's coming to, so I don't even know, even if Duck and Donuts or, you know, Walmart would do that, if you're going directly to, you know, pay it, you know, credit cards and things like that. It's just a, so that, that's the way I'm looking at this.
Just a reminder, just a reminder, I wanna stay with the homecoming. Y'all know stocks. They were in our video, for God's sake. Stay with them. Let's stay with them. So, we need a motion to change the, I'll make a motion that we change the procedure to a weekly check being written by the auditor's office for pickup by your office for donuts on the next week. Week to week deal. Okay?
Through. What's the limit on the amount?
Not over twelve dollars.
Twenty dollars. Because if, if you do twelve dollars?
Yeah.
Then they, they raise it the amount much now, then we gotta come back to court.
We don't want to do this.
So, how about two dollars?
So, when there's ten donuts left over, uh, who, uh, who needs the donuts?
I sure. I'm gonna go back to here with my broom and stop going to the library.
I've spent enough time, that's my second amendment.
Okay. All right, y'all get the motion, okay? Crazy as it was. All right, what would the amount be, the twenty dollars then?
The twenty dollars, yeah.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your red hand. Thank you so much.
Before you leave, congratulations on your reelection, then Scott, then Leon.
Yeah.
Thank you for mentioning, and usually they're talking about third quarter.
Dylan answered my question.
Okay. Uh, number seven, Platter, Randall County Child Welfare Board, do you consider an act upon an order of proclamation declaring the month of April, Platter County Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month this year? Here, Shannon, do you see her now? Starla Ingram, and she knew it was today, correct?
We've done this in the past.
Yeah, we do this, we do this every, every year, so the only thing I'm gonna ask her to change is that she has it adopted in April. So, we need to change the date.
I asked her about that and she, because I said, I, you know, it's gonna be signed in March. She said, what do you wanna do? She didn't seem concerned.
Okay. All right, so we do this every year, so I'm not gonna take your time.
I've said a couple of questions, well.
Okay, so, um, I need a motion and a second, please.
I move that we approve the order of proclamation declaring the month of April, Platter County Child, which is in the gray as well. Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. For zero, thank you very much. Number eight, neighborhood planning, this is the seventy-five thousand dollars that we put in the budget this year, and the city matched it. And the first meeting on February the eleventh, I believe Commissioner Wong was there at the cultural center. It was packed, full of people, and, which was a really good thing. But we meet again on the twenty-fourth, but the meeting, the, the people in this committee is Commissioner Mongolia, myself, Bob Cowell from the city, Kelly Shaw from the city, Elijah Johnson from the city, and, and Kelly Shaw's assistant, thinking. Uh, we meet, we've gone over the neighborhoods that we're going to do, starting with North Heights. And in your packet, you have a little map just showing the boundaries of this. Um, it was interesting, because at the meeting I went to that night, had several people come up and say, we don't need your help. We just need some help with our roof, or help with our plumbing. So, I'm not sure how, what we can do, but, but it is a good thing and I, I personally want to continue to put money in this. We have four, five neighborhoods that we're talking about. I'm gonna start with North Heights, we're then gonna go to St. Jacena, East Ridge, DeVario, and I'm forgetting one. Um, but anyway, so we're gonna, this is a good thing, and I just want to give you an update on, they meet again, the steering committees meeting on the seventeenth of this month, which is this week. And they are going to allow everyone that's signed up, and they have about forty people signed up to be on the steering committee, so. Okay, what are we doing?
What's the goal of this group?
The goal is to, to upgrade that part. I mean, this business lasted for several, several years, and I said, we're gonna just try to upgrade and make it look better. Make it all look better. I cried, Commissioner, and that wasn't... So, that's just an up, update. We'll give you an update every, every time we meet, Adrian and Sarah. We've already done the...
Can I ask you a question? Now, other than folks just coming to talk, are there people from that community beyond this?
Yes. Yes, and, and the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's not just administrative money, we're not using that to hire someone to do it. We're just using that money to do the work. We only use the portion of it to provide, so, some snacks and some drinks for that one meeting. And so, for the, for the most part, the money is, is being used for the actual project. And we want to continue to make that grow and do some good for that part of town. Okay?
Hey, Judge, you can put it, we can talk about this, but I don't know what's conclusion. We were kinda waiting to see if you could work, if you could put together some kind of a working agreement or something between us and the state. I don't have a clear idea about all of our purposes and I, I don't know, I mean, if I'm offered to do that, you need us to.
I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, settle the money.
Okay.
Okay.
Picky, picky, yeah. Okay, that's probably a good idea.
Okay.
So, you, you didn't, am I, you don't have?
Yes.
Okay, number nine is already done. For ten, new resources, security benefit, four five seven B plan, do you consider an act upon approving the extension of the Platter County four five seven B plan? An optional savings plan offered to employees and to authorize the county judge or other appropriate person? Is there another appropriate person?
As plan administrators in HR, we can sign some documents, but not adoption of declarations.
To sign the agreement on behalf of the county. All right, okay. Good morning, Sabatini.
Really, security benefits is just one of our many optional retirement plans that are offered to our employees and is administered by CBA. We've been using CBA or competitive benefits administration since March of two thousand and eleven. This is actually just a restatement of the security benefit plan that's already in place. Primarily, it's changing the effective date of the plan from February third to January first. And it's primarily to bring their, this particular plan in line with other security benefits plan to ensure or provide ease for them to provide their annual statements, their privacy notices, and those kind of things on a more automated basis. It brings us in line with other security benefits plans.
Is there a distinct benefit to the employee? And I know this is basically just to bring the plan to the city of Miami. I guess all the rest of the workers, but it's, what is the, I guess, the right, the employees?
It really doesn't change the benefit that is available to employees. We already offer security benefits as one of our optional retirement plans through CBA. And this just brings the plan in line with the rest of plans.
What kind of educational opportunities do we give our employees as far as financial planning for retirement? Do, do we have some kind of a session they can go to and say, and then at the end, maybe they can have a consultation with somebody that tells them, this is how much you need to save if you wanna make this much when you retire?
Currently, we do not have any such educational plan. We have TCDERS come in periodically and provide information to our employees. Uh, that information is primarily geared for TCDERS. But we don't have a financial advisor come in. I'm sure we could work something out with Art Paulette with CBA to set up a time and a, a room to, to be able to visit the employees or even set up a formal, um, trading session or with those sessions and allow employees to come. I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem to arrange.
Total benefits, I guess, to the employees.
Commissioner, Kelly and I were in a session the other day where a young man talked to all the commissioners and judges that were there and, and they offer that service to teachers, to government employees, and things. I'd be happy to share, share with you what that was, all of that. Supposedly at no cost to the guys, so I, maybe something.
We can certainly look into that. Currently, we, currently we have an arrangement or contract with CBA and all of our optional retirement, um, plans process through CBA.
Yeah, maybe they are.
You know, as long as it didn't have an impact on that relationship, that wouldn't be a problem.
So, you, you agree for that?
Yes, I can, I can check with either our or I would also be happy to take the information that you have.
I move that we approve the extension of the Platter County four five seven B plan, optional savings plan offered to our employees and authorizing judge to sign that agreement.
Sir?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. You're very sure of that.
She prayed.
In all, towards it, oh, thank you, Kate. And I have those original options. Number eleven, Appleson Hills, Unit Number One, Riker Lane, do you consider an act upon a request from the property owner to accept Riker Lane for county maintenance?
We have this part of the discussion, I think Sebastian was gonna come up with an estimate for what would cost to bring that cushion, and he's got that for us. It should be.
Twenty seven dollars?
Yeah, that's not including equipment, gas, manpower. I didn't know how to calculate that, so I'm confused for sure. I would probably say it's gonna take at least three weeks to excavate all the drainage. Because out there, some of those, some of those areas out there, the road is probably about three or four foot lower than the ditches. So, we'd have to take all that out, we'd have to put new coves in there, we'd have to start fresh. It's gonna be a little bit higher than that. I don't know what, I don't know what the manpower would cost. I guess you might be three weeks worth of work, another twenty dollars of labor, and gas. Because that's obviously, that's a, the maintainer loans, very expensive hours. We're looking at two and three weeks of excavation.
This is not in your budget, Rob?
No, none of this was in my budget. And also, I, I met out there with the, the residents out there, or a few of them, but we're at fifteen hundred feet, we'd have to go probably another three hundred feet, because that's where the end of the road is, because of the cold setting. And none of that can ever touch, we have some signs out there to keep the kids from going after the formula. So, we have to estimate that too, and that's not enough. The majority of it is drainage work, drainage coves and all that, and then, of course, the drainage, that's what we decided to do. How it would be.
So, how much are the residents gonna contribute?
Not that I'm worried. We have to have a pause after, so I don't know how you'd go about that.
How many, how many lives on that?
I believe there's four of them. Four or five, she's here, she lives on the, the end of there. I believe it was four or five residents, I can't remember.
Say that right, four or five?
So, is there any culpability, the county, sheriff, the, the vote, I guess, at all, or any safety or any issues?
Uh, I'm not aware of any.
How would we pay for this, Carrie?
We've got a pretty big project already.
We've got this, we've got, we've got, we've got, we're way behind in that. If we decided to do it, we have to budget it for next year.
Are we saying the impressions?
That's always something you have to think about as far as road, unfortunately, that's unfortunate.
One of the reasons why I thought maybe the residents participated in painting with this.
That might offset the, that is...
Well, if you, if, if you look at, at our twelve, it's the same issue out there.
This road has, Riker Road has come up many times and we have not accepted it. The only change that has come to our, um, yeah, intention is the fact that that one, back in what, two thousand? We said that, or the court mentioned that it was gonna take care of the roads of Applewood Hills. So, that kinda threw a little wrench in the deal, but, um, three years ago, and at that time, I visited with residents and they weren't too interested in participating in, in that. I don't know, personally, I wish we could do it at some point, but I understand this year in our budgeting process, the work you already have scheduled, I don't know how we can do it in this budget year, but...
And, and judicial reference, that two thousand court decision at that time, that's leading me to follow some issues of culpability from where, what the court voted on at that particular time in respect to what we are now, understanding that we're not bound by, could this court's decisions, but in a sense, all is not.
Well, the kind of, the decision in two thousand is a little bit ambiguous, because the, you know, part of it says, except, suggests that all roads...
the, you know, part of it says, except, suggests that all roads were accepted, the part of it just suggests new roads, that it just kind of kind of worked off. A little bit ambiguous, so it's hard to tell from that. I mean, judging from what Rook Ridge has done, I would say, you know, that they didn't, that was not in order to accept all roads, but that's, that's just speculation. That's all we can come to in the majority of those quarters. So however, I mean, it's up to the, I guess what I'm saying, I mean, it's whether or not to accept the road, it's up to the county. It's always a matter of discretion.
It would be a tight fit this year as far as budget issues. Is there a way, Sebastian, that we can do a systematic review of all the roads out there that may come up in the future that we may be living in?
Not just out there, but there's, there's a lot of, especially in Valley, where I get calls all the time to Valley, where there's so many roads that are dead, kid, with the county, not for maintenance, and they don't understand why. But there's so many of them that are, that are just, some of them are impassable. Went out to Valley or before, and I almost got stuck with my pillow and drive. But I mean, there's, there's so many out there. I could try to get you a list of them because I'm sure they're just going to keep coming up. It's the same situation, just like in Valley, or they want their road done too. And I understand, you know, and I feel for them. It's just, we have over four hundred miles of road, and as we, as we speak, we maintain with a ten, eleven man crew, so we pretty busy all the time. I'll just throw that out there, so I ask for help at Valley County. She'll consider that.
Okay, yeah, I guess we can just consider this a budget. Otherwise, the families, if, just to, a rough calculation here, the twenty seven thousand four hundred plus another twenty thousand for the work and the manpower would be ninety five hundred dollars a person, they're all a family. And I'm not that they're willing to, to pitch in to help pay. Of course, they probably wouldn't have to pay all of that, we can do some of that, but that's an option. But I'm assuming we'll have to just bring this up at budget time, since it's not budgeted and we don't have the money, don't have the money right now. So let's just bring this up and budget, if you can make a note of that, Kerry and Sebastian to put it into the budget.
Let me add just a couple questions here. Is there, is there a way you can do this in stages?
Well, yeah, the drainage is the majority of the problem out there. We have to just cut the ditches and all, all the material within the coves would have to be installed. And then after that, we can start working on the road gradually. And they would have to be in stages because we're so busy. I mean, whenever we get some downtime, we're going to have to send the layup there and have to start cutting the ditches. Like I said, the ditches are this high, and the roads bring people over that. In some areas out there, it's pretty bad. So we'd be a lot of.
So what's the number one priority?
Is drainage. Drainage, the road, because the water just goes on the road now because the ditches are so high in some areas. In some areas, it's okay, but we had to just cut all the ditches out, get the coves, but initially the water we're going, we're exposed to it now.
Somebody from Riker Lane here, did you want to make a comment? Especially about maybe help pay for the project?
I know, I know there's probably only two, maybe three that live. But the rest of them.
How many families are out there on Riker Road? So I don't believe you can tell.
There's there.
One of those renters, is that correct? The renters live across the street from you? Or they buy?
No, they're just renting. The owner's still owning. And that might, I'm not sure.
Is there, is there a compensation needed here between the county and the citizens out there?
I think so. They could be worth looking into just to see if they'd be willing to help pay.
It might, might help the project to get going.
Estimate of Lakers.
Okay.
I guess we, I guess we go there. We'll meet together. And I hate to open the door here, but I think it'd be good for the county to review an oversight of all that need coming up. If you're interested in seeing.
It's usually the same roads, so it should be.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pass this for now and bring it back when you get a better estimate. Is that okay? And then we'll, we'll just get a conversation with the, with the residents out there and see if that's something that we can, can contribute some of that on. Does that sound fair to them?
I think we ought to do that because it'd be part of the project if, you know, they're really serious about getting, getting taken care of. They obviously need to help take care of it. Should be part of the, are the talking points. If any of those folks just complained about their roads.
We could always set aside, there's so much money every year.
Yeah, and I think what Commissioner Vaughn has said is, I tried to explain it last time, but it didn't come out as well. But anyway, at some point, maybe we ought to have a yearly process, maybe we can take on a part of a road or something every year, because we have a lot of roads out there that we need something. You'd probably come up with a list of the roads that Sebastian fits the most complaints about, start off. I mean, I think that it would be pretty, I think, I think everybody used to put it in a list, but it kind of the same roads.
Okay, so, so we'll pass this. How much time do you need to come up with a good, pretty good estimate?
I'm sure I have my needs to.
Okay. And Dave, would you finish it right in the letter to the occupants out there just to see if they've been interested in getting it together and talking about this? Or is that something that someone else talks? Okay, so we'll put on there for two the next, for the next meeting, okay? All right, thanks, Sebastian. Just send in your, okay. Okay. Number twelve, Valley, or Parsons Road, request for maintenance to consider an act upon a request from the county to accept Parsons Road for improvement.
This one's a little different because there's only one, one house that I'm aware of that lives down in. I believe they have a building, a shop or something down there. Capital property, but they bought it up before for us to go down there and blade it. They said they'd blade it before, I'm not quite sure about that, but it's the same situation pretty much. And I'm assuming the cost would be the same, because it's about the same distance. How do you get a cost on that?
And you're talking Cleechy and the other ones, right, on the Riker?
Well, I was talking about Cleechy and Silco.
Oh, okay.
And Davidson Road, which next to this Parsons, is, is paved from coming out of ten sixty one. It's paved, I don't know how far in there, but it's paved quite a ways past the houses that are in there. And then they, they about bane off there. And this is one of those, so it's paved up to where that Parsons is, and then it goes up into their property. Like I say, that's the only house that's down here. And there's a, there's a lot more out there in Valley, where also I've, I've got a bunch of calls on Block Cat and Nob Hill, Pass Road to maintain, all night and the rest of the distance. There's connects up, connects up in Horseshoe. I mean, there's all of those out there. They all want their road done also.
So same thing, Dave, then, or next time you want to just bring it up and just see if we can just put this in the budget for this?
The only issue I have with Horseshoe and Valley, or is that our resources are back here. It's about twenty one miles from our shop to out there. And then to get water for Cleechy or anything we need, we have to come all the way back in. So that's going to, that's going to probably double the manpower and equipment cost out there. And when we did that back in nineteen ninety eight, when they accepted it, Holmes Construction was the one that did all the work out there. They just contracted them, and then we took the boat.
So.
So Holmes Construction did the roads that are, I think, that are.
Yeah, they did the subgrade, they did everything out there. And I have a little estimate here, I think it was, yeah, they did all the list. It was in nineteen ninety eight, November is when we accepted all that stuff. Well, the bid was awarded to Holmes Construction. For that reason, because of the resources.
All right, so what, what do you think we should do, Dave, on this one? Same thing?
I don't know, it's different. It is a different situation.
It's a whole lot different.
Yeah, it's a different situation. I mean, to me, I, if you, if you take this one on, then you might as well be prepared to take on all these other up there. So I would be very reluctant to, just because you're lack of resources right now.
It is different because the subgrade out there, you have to look at it. It's hard to get anything to combine in there. You have to have a lot of water for your Cleechy to get that subgrade right, or else this is going to start picking up. And then there's a lot of rock in some areas. It's totally different beast out there.
Yes. You know, I've received several emails and visited with this personally. I don't, I, you know, love to help everybody, but it's sometimes hard to do. And I remember our old county judge used to say, sometimes you make choices that aren't real easy to do, but that this is one I don't think we have the resources or the desire to do. To maybe the folks make a conscious decision who's out there. They know what the circumstances are when they, when they do. If they really want things done, then they should help them. I made, I made an issue with this whole.
So is there a conversation needs to be had with them?
Probably can opt for that, but one person isn't going to take it.
All right, then.
You want to do sixteen on here?
Sure.
Yeah, there's no action on number twelve. Number sixteen, we'll skip into that one. Bishop Branches Road Project, Hillview Drive, to consider an act upon a thriving road bridge to extend work on Hillview Drive an additional one hundred and fifty feet and to add additional Cleechy at a cost of one thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars.
Mr. Hammond called me and asked if we could go ahead. The reason we stopped right there is because that hill has a lot of rock and stuff that we didn't want to tear out of there with our equipment. So he's asking if we put Cleechy, extended another hundred fifty feet to, to pass that hill, which he, he seems to think that it'll wash out our road, I don't think so. It couldn't hurt to put Cleechy out there, I don't know.
Is that all we'll do?
Yeah, just, and I, we can put Cleechy wrapped and cut, cut the cost in half instead of the eighteen hundred, it would be nine hundred. Just have Cleechy wrapped and the end of where we're paving another hundred fifty feet. It's just going to crash the top of the hill, that's all that's going to do.
That's a project that's our team, really, over ten year periods.
Yes, he's involved.
That would just be added to.
So it's really not going to be eighteen hundred, it's going to be nine hundred?
Yes.
I move to reauthorize road bridge, extend work on Hillview Drive an additional hundred fifty feet and use additional, use Cleechy and wrap. Possibly nine hundred fifty dollars or something.
Okay, try the second. The motion and a second all in favor, Mr. Ray.
I'd like to, I'd like to back the two on my way.
Okay.
Just to give some clarity of where we want, what it, we pass it.
We just took no action, no action.
So, so what's the other? The guys with.
No, how do we do that, Dave? We need to make a motion and, and no second?
I think they did, no, there's no, you announce the action.
There's no action.
I think that's probably sufficient.
Okay, number thirteen, prohibition of firearms, judicial order, Texas Penal Code, section forty six oh three, recognize a judicial order prohibiting firearms in the Otter County Courthouse, Otter County Corse Building, and the San Jose Building. Dave?
I think I've been letting Scott speak.
Okay, Scott.
Assuming you have the orders.
Yes.
You will recall back last year when Attorney General Paxton issued Attorney General opinion eighteen forty seven on the issue of whether a courthouse was a prohibited place versus carrying handgun. The suggestion was made by the Attorney General that because section forty six point oh three, the penal code that he seen as ambiguous, that courts should be consulted about what areas of the building they consider to be integral to their operation. As we've talked about, over the course of time, it's elapsed since the issuance of that opinion. The legislative history aligns section forty six point oh three suggests that the intent of the legislature was to make the entire building in which the court is located a weapons-free zone. With that said, the judges have conferred, as I understand it, on what areas of the building they believe to be integral. And basically, their take is that the entire building is integral to their operation. So I look at this as essentially a belt and suspenders approach to making a determination of what areas of the courthouse. The courthouse, the courts building, San Jose building should be maintained as weapons-free zone. The basic idea is that the entire building should be, I think. I'm not entirely sure this order was absolutely necessary, but it certainly tends to reaffirm what the court is already claiming to be the case.
Notice that a couple of the judges didn't sign the document.
Yeah. Koki wasn't here and Pam refused. She doesn't agree. And that's her, that's her privilege and her right. We have several other judges that signed it, so it's okay. This does not by any means replace the thirty dot six, thirty dot seven that we already had in place.
Right, and, and to be clear, really, we've essentially determined that the signage we have the thirty one oh six and thirty one oh seven signage, which merely gives a warning that you're charged with trespass by license holder. Probably ours purpose in this case, because the real question is whether section forty six point three of the penal code applies. If it does, it's more serious to carry a handgun into a prohibited place than just a class B misdemeanor trespass charge. You potentially face a thirty three felony charge if you carry weapons into a weapons-free zone. So we'll, we'll continue to look at it. Maybe ultimately that our signage will change to simply notify people as a weapons-free zone.
So does this forty six oh three, does it cover us in case of a lawsuit or?
The, the whole question, if the, if the Attorney General were sued based on an allegation that our signage is improper, that's what section four eleven point two oh seven, I believe, in the government code allows a lawsuit brought by the Attorney General. It doesn't, no private lawsuit, it doesn't offer us private lawsuit. In that case, then the central question here does become, is this, is the facility a place where weapons are prohibited? And certainly, that would be an additional relevant consideration for making that decision.
So we don't need to vote on this just to recognize?
Right.
Any questions? So we're beginning. Thanks.
Yes, I favor. Hold it nicely here.
I noticed that. And I didn't, I don't know why. And I didn't, I don't know why. I'm like, that's, that's.
We'll, We'll Fix That, We'll Fix It. Maybe Then There's Certain.
That May Be Gitch, Or That May Be Gitch. It's called, It's using the edge over there. Although You Have The Probation Office Over There Too.
Yeah, I think I could still consult With A License.
Uh, Exactly, Okay, Okay. Alright, We Can, If You Can Fix That, Okay. Number Fourteen, Shirley Bonds Deputy And Assistant Deputy Treasurer To Approve Shirley Bonds For Deputy Treasurer, Assistant Deputy Treasurer Pursuant To Chapter Eighty Three Local Government Code. Dave?
Uh, Dave, Uh, I, You Get, I Put A New Copy And I've Got The Originals On My Desk, Which I'll Bring Down Later For Filing. But Basically, Uh, With The Change In Personnel In The Treasurer's Office, We've Done, David Brooks, Uh, Virchow's Bond, And Admitted It And Then We Added A New Bond For David Flores, Who Was In There. But Same, Same Conditions As The Treasurer's Bond. Statutory Department In Commissioning For Approve That Bond's Able To Be Used. And Hundred Thousand Dollars Is The Maximum Amount We Have Charged, Or Not Charged, But A Bond.
Okay, any questions on this?
Move We Approve Shirley Bond For Deputy Treasurer And Assistant Deputy Treasurer Pursuant To Chapter Eighty Three Local Government Code.
Second?
Slime.
Have A Motion And A Second All In Favor, Raise Your Hand.
Four zero.
Yeah, you could do it now.
Uh, No, No, Make It Now, I don't know. Number Fifteen Elections Order For Modified Polling Locations To Recognize The Order For Modified Polling Locations For The Past Primary Elections.
I'll Try To Handle This Bill, I may consider. But I dread all the work, So I Have A Question. Don't Want To Talk About That. Uh, My Understanding And Willin, I, I Counting On Willin Correct If I'm Stating. Um, There Was An Issue At The Uster Room State Veterans Home, Uh, With regard To Several Of The Veterans Who Reside There. Uh, They Didn't Get Their Application For Mail In Ballot In Long Time. Several Of Those Veterans Are In, Are Disabled Such That They Were Unable To Travel To They Vote Implementation. Um, And So, Uh, They, They Contacted Willin And Were Panicked About Letting Their Veterans Have An Opportunity To Vote. So We Worked Out, Uh, A Solution That Involved Transporting Two Electronic Voting Units Over To Uster Room Veterans Home. Uh, I Believe It Was The Thursday, Uh, The Last Thursday Of Early Voting. Um, In Order To Authorize That, I Performed The Order For Judge Tanner To Sign. Uh, Because The Court Has The Ultimate Authority To Make Proplications To Polling Locations. And We Thought It Best To Get The Court To Rapify This Order, Uh, So That There's Not Any Question About The legality Of Those, Uh, Those Veterans Who Vote There. And By The Way, The, When It Was A Temporary Polling Site, It Was Open For Anyone To Come Vote If You Wanted To. But Obviously, The Main Idea Was To Allow Disabled Veterans Couldn't Get Out To Vote Somewhere Else, Uh, To Catch The Ballot.
So Was It Be Open To The General Public?
It Was Open On That Particular Day.
I Don't Know If We Do This Now?
If, Well, This Would Be An Issue You Would Take Up, Uh, It, It Was Only, It's, It's, You're Just Ratifying That Order For That Particular Day, Thursday.
Maybe next time.
February Twenty Sixth. Saturday, Sorry. Um, Now, In The Future, It May Be You Wish To Consider Making That A Polling Location. Uh, And You Would Have The Ability To Do That Going Forward. For Right Now, You're Just Ratifying The Order That Allowed Them, Allowed The Elections Administrator To Take Two Units Out There, Letting Some Guys Vote.
How Many, How Many, How Many Veterans Are Out There?
There, There Are Approximately A Hundred Out There And That Day We Had Approximately Twenty That Came To Vote. We Had One Thing That We Were Not Anticipating, They Had To Look For Photo ID For All The Veterans And We Had Another Six That They Could Not Locate A Proper Photo ID. Their Best Method Is Still Valid By Mail. That's Yeah, Because For, You Know, That Really Is The Best Way We're To Go. And So We're Working Within The Future To Equip All Of The Veterans With Valid By Mail. But In This Case, The Facility Had Not Gotten, They Have Not Done For The Veterans What They Had Been Done. And We Had Just A Large Group Of Minutes For West End That They Were Not Be Able To Participate In, Well, It Possibly Be Their Last Residential One. So.
So It's, So It's Appropriate To Valid By Mail Without The Application For, But, Uh, Actually Physically Person. Wouldn't Have Valid Photo ID?
Right, See, Without, Without By Mail, You Don't Have To Have A Photo ID. And So That's One Of The Things. Well, These, A Lot Of Them Did Have IDs But They Were With Their Families And Their Families Were Not Reached And Not.
So Do We Know Why They Didn't Eat The Well? I'm, It, Just Curious.
They, Um, They Wait Until The Last. They Were Given Some Misinformation Not By Our Office, But By An Outside Group. And We Received Their Applications, Um, Roughly Two Days After They Had Off. And Even At That, They Were Filled Out Incompletely And properly. So We Were Working With Them To Correct.
Well, Thank You For Know What You Did And I Could Have Been Famous Company For Doing That Work. Okay, So Any Other Questions On That?
Just stretch your hands.
So That Is So Recognized, Thank You For Your Work Again.
Actually, I Think We Probably Need A Motion And Second Out To The Public To Approve That Order.
Okay. Okay, Lou. You Have A Motion?
I Make A Motion That, Uh, We Approve The Order For Modified Polling Location For The Past Primary Elections At The.
That's right.
You Good, Lou?
Yes.
Have A Second?
Second.
A Motion And A Second All In Favor, Raise Your Hand, Or Your Hand.
Thank You.
Thank You. Alright, Number Seventeen, Fire Rescue Donation Of Water Tank To Accept Donation Of Seven Hundred And Fifty Barrel Tank. From Blue Night Energy Partners Into Agreement And Use Agreement With The Critter Ranch For The Location To Place The Tank. Okay.
Good Morning.
How Are You?
I'm Good, How Are You?
Good.
We Were Contacted By Blue Night Energies That Built, That Changed Their Facilities On Two Eight Seven. And They Were Talking About Our Firefighter Capabilities There. I Said Our Biggest Problem Is Water. Cause We Have To Come Back All The Way To Town To Get It. They Offered To Donate Us The Tank That We're In Question. Went Out And Looked For It In The Workforce, Uh, Talked To The Critter Ranch. And They Offered To Let Us Use Part Of Their Land Which Is Immediate, Almost Immediately Adjacent. Actually, It Is A Driver Out Of The Facility, Um, Road Bridge To Really Help Us Move It. And Do Some Work, Uh, To Improve The Pad That They're Giving To Us. So That's Where We Are.
I, I Talked To John Critcher After That Fire That They Had Out There And He Was Very Appreciative Of What The Work Y'all Did. And Probably This Might Be Enhanced And To Have A Tank Out There Because It Was Get, I Get Pretty Serious, I Guess. Could Have Met His, His Property, But Unfortunately You Guys Didn't Hear Him.
And It's A Gap That We Don't Have. We Have Water At The, At The North County Line. We Have Water In Town. We Have Water Some At The Fame Plant. Uh, This'll Be Another Source In Between, So That Our Trucks Don't Have To Go So Far To Get Water. It's About, It's A Little Over Thirty Thousand Gallons Of Water, Which Is Twenty Two, Twenty To Twenty Two Loads On Our Big Trucks.
Win Win?
Yes.
Second Motion That We Approve The Donation Of The Tank.
Second. I Have A Motion And A Second All In Favor, Raise Your Hand. Thank You.
I'd See That Also On, Uh, I Thank You, But I'm Better To Do It.
Absolutely. Says It Commences On, Is That Today's Date?
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, I've Got The.
Oh, You Haven't, Okay, Alright.
Pat May Have Suggested About Change On The Agreement. And By The Way, I Assume That Motion Included The Approval Agreement With Critter Ranch.
Yes.
If It Didn't, We Mean That, Uh.
Okay.
But, Uh, That, So Pack It, I Made Some Minor Changes From The Sample We Got In The Package Since The Package Went Out With Pat's Suggestions, So.
I'm Glad I Can Use The Put It In The Critter Ranch.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank You.
Alright, Number Eighteen, Texas Association And Counties Risk Management Grant To Consider An Act Upon Allowing The Sheriff's Office To Apply For Grant, An Amount Of Thirteen Thousand Three Hundred Ninety Six Dollars Through Risk Controlled Reimbursement Program. Money Will Be Used For Ten Ballistic Fest And Four A D Ds.
Good Morning.
Good Morning.
Sure.
We Got This Email From The Judge Talking About, I Guess Steve Lab, They've Got The Information To Them About A Granted The Benefit Of Their Tac. So I Got The Call And Asked People About It. Basically, The Tac Is Giving Me Free Money To The County. The Ballast Was Almost Fourteen gallons. So There Are Certain Islands That You Can Use That For. We Started Looking At Some Other Islands, But Then We Started Looking At Our Best We Looked At. As Far As They Are For This Year, So We Decided To Use That For That. And We Had Some, A Little Bit Of Extra Money There, So We're Going To Try To Do It In Four A D Ds And So. Get Those With Several Cars That Don't Have Those And Using The Bottom, You Know, Pickles. It's A Reimbursement Grant, It's A Lot Paid Up From The Times Are Coming. You Have To Please Fill Out, I'm Sorry, You Have The Application. We Have To Fill It Up, I'll Do That First, But It's Actually The Twenty One Federal August, So It Would Be In The Next Month.
And This Is A Win Win, I Mean, It's Just, It's Good To Give You Money. We Also Have Another Area Too, The Risk Management. Um, Is That Part, Is That Part Of You Or?
It's All Part Of It.
So, Okay.
There Was Stuff For Us, There's Stuff For Facilities Out There.
Yeah, Did You Look Into This Mine? Was There Anything That You Could Use With It?
Very Little.
There Was Nothing That You Would?
We, I Called Steve Lab About It Friday In Order To Help, Steve Was Saying The Same Thing. I Was Unaware We Had To, They Left The Application On.
Oh, Okay.
So We Get.
Okay. Well, You Still Have Time?
Yeah.
Okay, Good. Alright. Alright, You Have A Motion And A Second?
I Move That We Allow The Sheriff's Office Apply For Grant The Amount Fifteen Thousand Three Hundred Ninety Six Dollars Through The Risk Controlled Reimbursement Program. With The Money To Be Used For Ten Ballistic Fest And Four A D Ds.
It's Actually Thirteen Thousand.
What Do They Say?
It Said Fifteen.
I meant Thirteen.
Okay, Oh, It's Okay.
I Second That.
Okay. Have A Motion And A Second All In Favor, Jan?
Judge, Stand.
Yes.
That Also Included The Party Form? That They Wouldn't Be Able To?
No, It Didn't. It Was Specific On The, The Two Areas, Law Enforcement And Risk Management.
So Did It Have Been? I Was Just Curious, I Called The State And Get Me Some And Friday. I Also Looked Into The Party Form.
If, If You Can Find Somewhere Where It Applies, It'd Be Great. Thank You.
I Think I Still Have Initial Coverage Sheet If It Was Awesome.
Alright, Number Nineteen, Public County Technology Projects To Hear A Report On Their Public County Technology Projects Taking Its Necessary. Hello Again.
Uh, We've Got Several, Uh, High Profile, I Guess You Called Very Visible, Very Public, Multi Million Dollar Projects From Lost. I Kind Of Wanted To Just Give You A Real Short Overview Of Them And Any Questions That You've Got. I Promise I Won't Get Too Deep While I'm In. The First Is Out Of The Fire Station, Uh, Fire Station Three Out There Is Being Built. Uh, We Have The Tower Completed, Uh, We Have That Built And Finished Out Last Week. We Have Been Out There, It's A Hundred And Eighty Foot Tall Tower, Uh, That We're Going To Put Some Wireless Equipment On. It's Pretty Present, We'll See. Uh, All The Other I T Equipment, Fire Station's Already Been Purchased, It's Already Set Stage And Everything We're Exploding On The Building Will Be Built. Essentially, So There In Few Weeks, We'll Be Ready For That. Uh, The New Sheriff's, Uh, Facilities That Are Being Built Out There, Uh, We Call It An R and P For Construction Of Fiber. It's Going To Go On The Ground All The Way From Downtown Out There. Uh, That R and P Is Going To Open On March Twenty Fifth. Last Time I Checked, We Got About Twenty Five Different Construction Firm fitted, At Least Looked At The Proposal. So Hopefully We'll Have A Good Number Of Bidders On That And Get Us A Decent Price. Uh, It's Part Of That R and P That I Wrote And Put In There To Have The Construction Then Completed By The End Of This Year. Even Though The Building's Not Going To Be Ready Till Next Summer, We'll Be Sure That It Will. Uh, Another Reason We Want It Going And Completed Is That We're Working On A Partnership With The City Where They're Going To Be Leasing Some Of That Fiber Cable From Us. And, Uh, The Agreement Is That They're Going To Begin The Payment On It Soon If The Project Is Completed. Uh, Not Even Waiting For Our Building To Be Built Out There. Uh, Because Part Of The Fiber's Going To Go Within About Fifty Feet Of The Airport Property Out There. And The City's Going To Benefit It, That They're Going To Be Able To Lease Some Of That Fiber From Us And I Have To Build Their Own. So, Uh, We Still Got, I'm Going To Give It A Day, We're Getting A Little Bit Of Fun Up At The City. We Get To That Point. But, Uh, We Should End And Make The Several Hundred Thousand Dollar Back.
We Can't End With The Whole Budget.
I'm Working On It, So We Have Plenty Of Money. Working On It, Okay. Uh, But As Part Of That Process Also, We, We Have To Get, Handle Our Own Permitting, So We Have Deal With Tax God, Railroads. Uh, I Have Railroad Permits Are Expensive. Uh, But Those Pro, Permits Are In Progress, We'll Probably Next Four To Six Years We'll Have Those. Uh, There Will Be Another Tower That Goes About There, Uh, For Some Wireless Equipment, We'll Put An R and P Out For That Probably Next Month. And Probably Try To Get That For Four Hundred Times. Uh, So That's The Construction Projects, We've Got A Few Software Projects, One Is The Prosecutor Package. Uh, That Package Went Live, Uh, At The End Of Last Year. And I Should Be Able To Come Back To You Here In A Few Weeks With A Refund Check, Uh, From The Council Of The Counties. Because It's A Co-Op, Any Money That We Put Towards The Project That's Not Used, We'll Get Refund Back For That. So, We'll Check Out. Uh, The J P Core Software Is Due July Of, Uh, May First. We're Taking Our Time With Actually Couple, It's Still A Way Under Budget, But We Pushed It Back And Up Because We're Fixing A Lot Of Things Along The Way. The Old Software Would Let You Put In Dates Like February Thirtieth.
Okay.
Uh, In State abbreviations Where It Should Be T X Or Couple Of Hundreds You Put In Numbers Or Words, So We're Having Might Get Fixed That On. Thousands Of Cases. Um, We're Also Automating A Lot Of Things That Were Done By Hand Before Like The O C A Reporting Instead Of Motion Drop Application For Reports On That. We're Going To Fix All That, We're Automatically. Uh, Tyler Odyssey For The District And County Clerks And Courts, Uh, That Project Kick Off In January And We're Doing Go, Their First On-Stop Meeting Was Last Week. And We're Doing Go Live With That Probably The First Quarter Of Next Year. We Also Have Some Things Going On In-House, Uh, We're Rewriting The Hot Check Tracking Application. Yes, There's Still Businesses That Take Checks, There's Still Hot Checks Being Written, And So, Uh, We're Rewriting That. Uh, We'd Like To Go Live With That Probably The First Of June. We'll Finish With That, We're Going To Redid The Online Tracking And District Reporting Applications. That's All Twenty Years Old. Uh, Couple Other Things, Uh, We've Got An Applicant Tracking, Uh, Software Piece We're Writing For H R. It Would Be A Higher Advantage To Allow Folks To Go Online, Fill Out Our Application For Plugging Online, Actually Upload Their Resume. And Keep All Those Applicants In A Database. So If I'm A Higher Manager, I Can Go Back And Look At People Who Applied For Previous Jobs. Or If You Need A Report To D O L Or Whoever It Is On How Many People At What Time Applied For Which Job. And Do Look For Paper Applications. Uh, The Other Thing, And Where's Where The H R To Kind Of Sign Off On That, That Will Be Live. Uh, Also, We're Putting Together A Little Report For All Employees Called The To Compensation Statement. It's Going To Show, Uh, What The County's Investment Is In Them. So, Yes, We Pay You Cash As Employee, But We Also Pay X Amount Of Dollar In Cordure, Retired, We Pay X Amount Of Dollar In Cordure For Health Care. So It's Like A Plumb Insurance, That Sort Of Thing. And So, Uh, We're Putting Together That Report So The County Will Have That For The First Time. And That's It.
Notes Allo. Somebody Ain't Note.
It's All Over Here.
You Know That.
Any Questions, David?
I See, Uh, The Range On That, That Tower.
Um, The Towers, It's Not So Much The Tower That, That Dictates The Range, It's The Equipment That We Put On There. And The Equipment That We're Going To Put On There Is Going To About Fifty Miles. And, Uh, Once We Have That Up And Running, We'll, We'll Put Some Wireless Equipment On Top The Same Way. It's Sorry, Hundred And Four Underwatch.
That Was Coming, Jennifer, My Lights Up There, Right?
That's How We Find That, We Can See The Building Here Now, It's What You Did, I Have You Up, There's Built There.
Good Word, Lou.
Wow, Thank You, James.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, Yeah. Number Twenty, The Texas Conference Of Urban Counties To Consider An Act Upon A Move Of The Annual Resource Sharing Abandonment For J P Corps On For Maintenance And Operations. for J P Core software maintenance and operations.
Yeah, because, um, because this is not a standard vendor relationship that we have, where we're applied and required for vendors. This is a co-op. Uh, this particular project is a co-op between us and the Alice and Jared counties. And so because of that, every year, all three measures goes out and sign off on the, it matters to be budgeted for maintenance and operation costs. And so that's, every, every year, we'll be kept to you saying, okay, here's the fifty-page agreement, and we give a signature from the county judge. Uh, the money's already budgeted and everything, everything's all new, we just have to sign off on it. You give a motion or just a signature?
We have a motion.
I move that we, I agree on the approval of the, uh, to approve the, uh, the annual resource sharing agenda for J P Core software maintenance and operations.
That's second.
Second, the, the note that the judge will sign about the.
Have a motion and a second, in favor of Jen? Thank you, Jameson. Uh, Mike, have a report on park and projects for us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, the Santa Fe elevator modernization project, we started this July twenty-second of last year. The completion date for it was slated for November first of this year. Uh, elevator number one being the southeast unit was supposed to, uh, is actually, started in July, was supposed to be completed November seventeen of twenty fifteen. That's not been done. Uh, car number two right adjacent to it was supposed to start in November eighteen, then finished March sixteen. So, as it stands right now, they're behind sixteen weeks on each one of those elevators. We were at the end of the project, and I've already made a word of this. We've got liquidated damages that we're dealing with at five hundred dollars a day. Uh, that's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that are already in the works. Uh, what are they gonna do to bring it back online? They have went through two crews in order to get this project, uh, actually, the word is today. Uh, we held meetings over the last two weeks with them, they're looking to turn over the first car, March twenty-fourth. And then on the second car that they're gonna be doing, they're gonna look to run two crews, uh, one day in that type crew in order to try to get back online, honestly, and hopefully they'll get it. Safety is one of the critical issues here with a high-rise building, just wanna make sure everything's working properly. I have our consultant on the side, he's going through right now, so we'll speak, expect him to participate today.
Why is it so difficult, Mike? Why is it?
I think.
The parts hard to come by, or?
Well, they blamed it on the manufacturing, making parts, they lost orders, what, just the truck was blamed on. I think a lot of it has to do with the caliber of technicians and personnel that do it. You see a lot of the younger people in right now trying to run these big crews, a lot of the older people's retired and moved on. It's just become a lost trade. Uh, sheriff's department projects, I've not been out there at the airbase, uh, demolition, uh, the structure's completely down on them by this moment. Mayor, they haul all the trash, they're in the process between now and Wednesday to remove the steel and the remainder of the, uh, concrete and walls, they'll start foundation removals this Wednesday. Uh, their completion date is April the twenty-third, they're on schedule for that project. Fire rescue, Station Three, the concrete slab and foundations being repaired. Y'all not had the opportunity, please y'all have a little look at it, you, you'll see a lot of changes, especially starting today. The, uh, building arrived, two shipments last Friday, the last one arrives today, with the panels for the building, they'll start staying in the building though today. Uh, within a very year future, next week or two, uh, they'll work this project as about a quarter day, just our senior team are going inside. The, uh, well and septic, I will be addressing that here in just a moment, uh, we're looking for a start date on that, March the twenty-first, Excel Energy. Hopefully it will be, uh, established in the final priority of the property this weekend to next week. Uh, air grounds projects, roofing projects.
We'll record the other night, so we can. One building's still there.
One building's still there.
Mail, we call it.
Uh, we have three buildings, as you recall, the commissioners' court last year went through with the agreement with the fair board that, uh, they will put the roofs on all of the remaining buildings, all we will be helping do on is the Cody Baxter. We've, uh, we went out for bid on all those three buildings, combined them as one total package where G C would be brought on board, a general contractor, they would help oversee the projects due to the complexity of the Cody building, due to some previous information that we received from them. Uh, we have a lot on two structural forensic engineers during the last three years. All they did was look at the, all of the buildings from a cosmetic or functional damage to decide if it was, uh, leaky or just cosmetic. That has nothing to do with the Cody building. Here recently, uh, Percy has went through, Department of Services, uh, Crenshaw, given to the contractor, being a structural engineer. They have went through, looked at the Cody building. Nope, they're going to have to be replaced. That was one of the agreements that, uh, you had with the fair and the child share, that cost fifty fifty, so. Take a lot of money right there. Uh, the timetable for the two new bids to be let out and awarded, uh, has to be no later than April the twenty-fifth. You gotta have that out there, that gives you the months of, uh, May, June, and July. We actually have until November the first to have a sign of invoice. Virgil's schedule is out there, he does not want any, any work going on August, September, and October due to the paranormal force, the events that he has out there. I still think it can be, the reality of completed. And by removing the general contractor from the project, you probably save yourself two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not doing the permits, your share, you probably save yourself four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's just your share, so you save a lot of money by taking this route, uh, in order to move forward. Santa Fe L E D lighting, Dave, we have visited with the electrical contractor, we do have a new controller on the side. We'll be getting it installed within the next week or so. Hopefully this will correct the lighting problem and pop the building. Uh, one thing that I did ask the electrical contractor, is what the spotter about, was if I was, they, since they give us, we will look to obtain them and put them on the shelves, hopefully we'll get this issue.
Okay, good.
I'll keep it close.
Thank you.
C P S closed the court, the furniture was supposed to arrive last week, I've not been notified, did it arrive?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll check into that, it was supposed, it was supposed to have been on site last week. Baseball stadiums. Uh, last year, the commissioners' court set aside a hundred thousand dollars in order to put into the stadium, uh, basically two concession stands being the ground level and the second floor level. Out of the hundred thousand dollars that you allocated for that, I removed twelve thousand from that total. That's what I needed in order to winterize, be winterized the stadium and take care of any electrical issues at the end of the day. So out of the twelve thousand dollars, as it stands right now, uh, we've got a little over five thousand dollars left, and that will carry us through the remainder of the year. I've still gotta do some electrical work out there, we got main power lines down, and probably take that even, being that, even do that scope of work. Uh, the meetings that we've had with the interim general manager, the Grand Prairie, uh, John Bilbo, uh, Commissioner Mergen, I met with him on the side, went through and looked at these two concession stands, uh, Commissioner Bond went through a few while back with me to look at what needs to be done. The, last year, uh, the previous general manager was given this list, was asked to move forth in order to make these upgrades to these two concession stands to, in order to obtain a health permit, where we are right now. Uh, this is with Sean May, John, and we went over everything that we felt needs to be done. If you could just envision this, these two concession stands, Commissioner Anna, you know, you would agree with this. When you walk into those concession stands, just envision, they've been totally gutted out, all the equipment comes out. You walk back into them when we're finished, you will have new painted ceilings floors, you'll have an F R P panel down all the walls, you'll have new service windows, you'll have new doors on it. We are required to do new lighting and electrical throughout it and plumbing. Uh, does not be, those two items, electrical plumbing does not be covered. We have a meeting today at one thirty out there to go over all the scopes work with contractors. This is a very fast-paced project as well. The cost has to be presented and finalized within the commissioners' court for the month, with your next meeting of this month. If it does not happen, we're not gonna make this project. Here's a few of the concerns that I have in that project. We've got eighty-eight thousand dollars to spend on two concession stands. The project duration and the start of the season, uh, being late, we've gotta have this work completed. Uh, the cost of each project, one that we can fund it, and I spoke to Commissioner, we did the other, uh, last Friday. And then, I think, I've already talked to John, they need to have a backup plan in case we cannot get these projects off the ground, water dig on them. Here right now, I do have concerns that these projects won't be completed. County extension flooring and, uh, site drainage landscape projects, uh, the flooring price, I received it last week. Uh, the price just for it is four thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. The landscape architect, we issued a purchase order to them, I believe it was around eighteen hundred dollars for them to go in and do the design and provide you with the cost to do the work. Uh, this is what carry your while back, we'd like to present both of these projects to the commissioners' court, uh, next month in order to get both of them done at the same time, instead of waiting on the site landscape project to do it all of the year. That work needs to be done, we're doing your pouring for the house of buildings. And the last project, being the terracotta project, you currently have this budget, it'll wait until we get through the, uh, construction documents of your completion with architects and the sheriff's department projects, we'll be bringing that. Then I'll be giving that purchasing order for that.
With all the current projects we have, purchasing just cannot take on this project right now, so the timing is, is good for us. It's, it's just, we have a lot of.
Number twenty-two, cooperative contract to consider enacted upon the approval of an interlocal cooperative contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety effective September one, twenty fifteen through August thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Now, this is a contract, uh, with our Texas Department of Public Safety to purchase the, uh, toxolizers, not pisses, alcohol, and those type of things that are required, this is the only vendor, uh, that we can get that from, and we're just asking, uh, for approval. I know that Debbie told me that she had Judge Tanner sign off on it because of the timing of the order, so, um, I would still think we need to go ahead and consider and act upon it.
Yeah, that's right. We didn't have to prove it early, because they needed money before they could, uh, give any supplies. And we had no supplies, insurance, like, all, so, uh, we didn't want to be two, three weeks without, without that, so. We asked Judge Tanner to, uh, yes.
The dates of this, the terms of the contract, September first, twenty fifteen, let them just come to us.
Uh, like I said, I don't know if you've used these, do you know the task?
Yeah, we have.
I guess if they just hadn't required a contract, you know, it's been a place, signed contract.
We've had a, we've had a contract before, it was just the first time, we just recently got, I just did think, I, I, I think there may have been a change in vendors or something. I think that was these, so.
We had a contract, or?
Oh, yes, we did, yeah, we did, this was, yes, I believe, before, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a long time, that's why.
I didn't realize we had a contract, I was just told that this one expired last year, so we have to do the, 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 too.
So you, you, you're easy to talk, you gotta have, it seems silly, but you gotta have a grand C P S to get that, to get that, the supplies, which we're, today, we use it up to, at this point. But we had this, this same thing.
I'm just, I don't think the timing, since it was last ordered, maybe that might be a situation, but, like I said, this is something that came up in my mind that I started, that they needed these supplies, and it was approved, they had to get them, I'm not sure.
So we, these are actual supplies for the sheriff's department.
Right, it's the top, the, the, is that, what is it?
Sort of blood drawl, I mean, yeah. And we were completely out last week. We have to use those, because it's got the right, keep the word, and people require like a minute or so.
We just, we just had a contract expire, so.
So I have a question, I don't know why they had not this information to us prior.
I move that we approve the interlocal cooperative contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety effective September one, twenty fifteen through August thirty-one, twenty seventeen.
Need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on favor, Richard. Four zero, thank you very much. Number twenty-three, uniform rental and laundry to consider enacted upon allowing purchasing to send a letter of non-renewal to GUK Services with contract in June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. The original thirty-six month contract expires five thirty-one sixteen, and then renew automatically and continuously for successive periods of one month each. Each unless they receive written notice of non-renewal at least ninety days in advance. So we're not going to go with them anymore.
Well, from my understanding, Debbie contacted everybody and they are not satisfied with GUK, so.
Who are we going to go to?
We're going to go, it's in the next, in a way this contract works, it's ninety days, so there's a transition, so we have to work with Dave, against Debbie, to get a letter out to them and something like that. But it's, the departments have requested that not to continue.
Is this the one that's in Albuquerque? GUK?
Right, I need a motion on that one, then.
I move that we allow purchasing this in the letter of non-renewal to GUK Services for contract to end June thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Need a second? Have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Thank you, four zero. Number twenty-four, employee uniform services to consider enacted upon approving uniform services with sentence through the US Communities twelve-jlh-zero-one-one-c. Contract effective seven-one-sixteen through three-thirty-one, twenty nineteen, that's my decision.
Yeah, so this which you want, you noticed the award effective is July one, that's because of the ninety days, so we needed to go ahead and get this contract also approved. So we can go ahead and start getting things set up with the apartments to get this one going, why we're terminating the other one, so they have to work together.
And the services are similar or cost similar?
Yes.
And where are they located?
They're in Amarillo, they're out of their main contract is out of Maryland, so, but they're, they are here and they did completely bid out through the US Communities contract, so.
Okay, good. Need a motion on that.
I move that, um, do not provide services with interest through US Communities twelve-jlh-zero-one-one-c. Contract effective July first of sixteen through March thirty-first of nineteen. Second.
Have a motion and a second? On favor, raise your hand. Four zero, do you have that contract with you, Ricky?
Uh, no, I do not, I'm sure because they fact the date July, so Debbie will probably get that for you, based on the timing.
Okay, number twenty-five, House Bill twenty-three and House Bill twelve ninety-five to recognize implementation of House Bill twenty-three and House Bill twelve ninety-five to purchase in bid processes.
This is just to recognize the two bills that we're actually putting into our bid process, they're required, house bills, so. Dave has looked overall and we had meetings and we know how the money to move forward to make sure these are being passed.
Do we need a motion on this day?
Oh, thanks, I'm just recognizing that.
So is there any questions? So recognized. Number twenty-six, professional services agreement to recognize amendment to professional services agreement to retain a structural engineer for services at Cody Arena. And to take further action as necessary. Services include the cost of the structural engineer and incorporating to the engineer's findings into the project documents, addendum. Cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
This is exactly what Mike was referring to, the timing, purchasing could not be fore on a project until we got to results, it's more something that you can do. So the timing had to be imperative that we went ahead and got that information so we can do that for a bid that's going out on the twenty-fifth. To me, the guidelines, or not guidelines, we put a deadline, we have the insurance process coming in.
So this is already done, right? You got to just recognize it.
All right, so recognized. Number twenty-seven, fire station number three project, informal quote number one-one-two-seven dash one-six. To consider enacted upon agreement with the scope report to encourage drilling company for a well on storage and separate tank, funding for fire station number three project.
Good morning, Ricky.
How are you?
I'm good. This is a project that's included in the grocery list, since the station is out of county and we don't have access to city waters, we have to drill an oil well. We're in our own sector system. We went through the process and purchased the ore.
This is all included in the cost of the fire station, correct?
Yes, this is all in the, it's Mike referred to as the grocery list.
All right, I need a motion, miss, and show me your questions.
Through the scope work, pretty driven company for a well on storage and separate tank, and for a fire station. Probably, probably a question.
Need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Four zero, thank you very much. Plumbin Island, number twenty-eight, consider enacted upon following Plumbin Islands. Rode and Bridge to hiring of Shawn Neighbors as maintenance tech as replaced with Sandy Burton effective February eighteenth, twenty sixteen. Maintenance, we still leave the recognition, I'm sorry, resignation of Leah Diane Race as custodian one, effective February twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen. And impression technology, a performance-based salary increase for Kurt Ferguson as network administrator using existing partner funds effective March fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Have a motion on these?
Approve of the Plumbin Islands, so noted, for items eight and six.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the Plumbin Island, on favor, raise your hand. Jail report today is four hundred and seventy-two people in jail, eight of eighty-nine of those are females. We have none in children's, and the percentage of felonies is eighty percent, percentage of prisoners is fifteen percent. Do we have any county insurance items? No, we do, no insurance items, no executive session day. Any due to the hours for next time, besides the Rock Road? Is that all? Any further questions, statements, comments? Now, let me go to the gentleman.